Supervisor Hook, District 4. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Supervisor Hook, Clerk of the Board. Julie, are there any corrections or allegations to this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Hall. This is Julie Patterson-Hunter, Clerk of the Board, and there's no changes or corrections to this agenda.
Okay. So I'm going to explain a little bit what's happening here pursuant to Governor Gavin Newsom's executive order pertaining to the convening of public meetings in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In-person public comment has been temporarily suspended until further notice. Members of the public, however, can comment on today's one agenda item by emailing bos-publiccomment@co.nevada.ca.us or by leaving a voicemail message at 530-264-0554. Please provide your name, city, or district of residence, and the agenda item. Obviously, this is only one agenda item that you wish to comment on. As this is a special meeting, no public comment will be accepted on items not appearing on the agenda. So we will go to public comment after we hear the item today. And we are convening this meeting today to address a resolution approving a letter of support for Nevada County's Novo Coronavirus reopening readiness plan and authorizing the Chair of the Board to sign the letter as a necessary step to safe, phased reopening. This is a very exciting moment, not supposed to start, but it's a big deal what we're looking at doing today. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan and Jill, Ryan Gruber and Jill Blake. Are you both online and ready to give us a presentation?
I am online, and in just a moment, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ken Cutler and Director of Public Health Jill Blake. But just wanted to preface, last Monday, the Governor announced that reopening of low-risk businesses would commence on Friday, May 8th, to include curbside retail. Responsive to county feedback, he also announced that certain counties with low COVID-19 prevalence would be able to accelerate through Phase 2 reopening if they meet certain readiness criteria. Despite the process being shared with counties only late Thursday, we're ready to submit our readiness plan immediately after this meeting if the Board approves. One thing should be absolutely clear, however, and that is that COVID-19 remains a significant threat, and we are ready to move forward because of the amazing job our community has done to stem the threat and because of the capacities we've built to be able to contain future outbreaks. Continued diligence is necessary, but we know that our businesses will protect their customers and employees and that our community will continue to take this seriously so that we can begin to reopen in a way that is safe. I'm proud to introduce Public Health Director Jill Blake and Health Officer Ken Cutler to talk more about the attestation we will be submitting today, should your Board give the go-ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. This is Jill Blake. Good afternoon, Chair Hall and members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Jill Blake, your Public Health Director, and as Ryan indicated, I'm here with Dr. Ken Cutler, your Health Officer, and we're going to discuss briefly the work that we've done to prepare our requests for a county variance and to request a letter of support, as Ryan indicated, so that we may submit our required documentation to the California Department of Public Health today. So I believe that Jeffrey has a PowerPoint that he's going to put up for us. Is that accurate, Jeff? I think we're waiting just a moment for Jeff.
He's on it, Jill. PowerPoint will be up in a moment.
Great. I was going to say that I think we can advance to Slide 2, and it's an image that you all have seen probably a number of times already. So I think I can advance. Yes, great. So there you go. As I mentioned, you've probably seen this several times by now, the stages included in the state's resilience roadmap. These stages indicate when different types of businesses that are categorized by risk, when they can reopen to the public after they make certain adaptations to their practices and their environments to ensure worker and customer safety. The state requires that all counties move in unison from Stage 1 to Stage 2. And last Friday, we moved as a state. We sort of edged from Stage 1 into Stage 2 with a soft reopening that allowed for curbside retail. As the slide indicates, Stage 2 addresses lower-risk businesses. So I'm just, does that work? It does work. So Slide 3, Stage 2 expansion. Again, the state's movement into Stage 2, as they indicated before and as we've talked about before, will be phased in gradually. As Ryan mentioned, counties that meet the readiness criteria and that work with the California Department of Public Health, they can consider increasing the pace at which they advance through Stage 2, opening certain workplaces before the state does as a whole. And then counties that meet that readiness criteria may pursue a variance. We are indeed pursuing such a variance, and Dr. Cutler, as our Health Officer, is the person who needs to attest to the state's criteria, to attest that we meet that criteria, and he will walk you through that criteria right now. Dr. Cutler?
Hi. Thank you for convening Chair Hall and Supervisors. If we can go to the next slide. So the state put out various criteria that we can attest to in terms of documenting our readiness to advance through Stage 2 at a pace that's different than the state's. And so the first one is stability of COVID-19 cases. So you need to have fewer than one case per 10,000 population over the last 14 days. And as people who have followed our dashboard have seen, we're well below that. That would be 10 cases in our case, in our jurisdiction, over the last 14 days, and we're well below that recently, fortunately. The second is that there are some protections for essential workers. If you recall, even in the Stage 1, people were allowed to work if they were in certain sectors that were identified as essential. And there have been various guidances put out by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention on how to establish those essential workplaces with safeguards and have the appropriate personal protective equipment as well. And so we've worked very closely with healthcare facilities and first responders, people working with sheltered populations, people working with congregate populations, and skilled nursing facilities, et cetera, on how to have the protections. And so we can attest that we're ready there as well. Another thing going forward is that as you reopen, your society and have some more movements, you have more possibility for transmission, unfortunately, and have to prepare that there may be more cases of infection with COVID-19. And so we want to be able to rapidly test people so that they can be isolated if they have it, and our testing capacity needs to be at 1 and 1/2 per 1,000 population. So we have to have the ability every day in our county to test approximately 150 people. And for a long time, as you know, testing was really constrained in the United States, throughout California, and locally. Fortunately, with the addition of the state-run OptumServe testing site in Grass Valley and also a testing site in coordination with Placer County over on the eastern side, those facilities themselves can test over 100 people per day. Plus, many of our healthcare providers have expanded their capacity along with our hospitals. And so we meet the testing capacity criteria. Also, looking at containment. So if we test somebody, they test positive, we have them isolate themselves, we, as public health, do tracing of contact so that they can be talked to about quarantine and staying out of the population, monitoring themselves, have instructions on that. And the state gave an indicator for that, or an ability that we have 15 people who are trained in contact investigations per 100,000 population. And so our public health staff has worked very hard over the last few months to meet this. Our public health nurses, who some typically were not in communal disease control, have been trained by our communal disease control staff, plus the state has started to roll out new training for contact tracing, and we have some people in the pilot program for that. And as it becomes available, hopefully, we'll have some technical assistance as well so that we can be efficient using technical platforms for contact tracing. We've worked very closely with our hospitals. They have to have the ability to surge if there's an increase in the number of people with infections. And so the state has asked that they have the ability to surge by 35%. And both hospitals have been diligent about this. They've had frequent meetings of their executive staff, of their medical staff, of their healthcare workforces, in terms of meeting, being able to do that. And so both hospitals can meet the 35% surge, and both hospitals are supplying us with letters of support to move forward as well. In Stage 2, as Jill and Ryan said, should we have the variants, which we're looking forward to, there are various sectors that can be advanced faster than the state. And those are office-based businesses, even though telework would still be strongly encouraged, retail establishments with modifications, training of employees, and checklists of ways to respond and safeguard employees as well as clients. Personal services, including car washes, pet grooming, tanning facilities, and landscaping. Dine-in restaurants, again, with modifications. The state will be putting out some guidance specifically for dine-in restaurants. That's anticipated to come out tomorrow. Childcare facilities as well. The Department of Social Services has some guidance that we point to for that. And then finally, schools are listed in Stage 2, but we are not applying at this point for schools to open for in-classroom with the variants that we're seeking. So I just want to be clear about that. So once our variance goes in, it's reviewed by the state, it's posted online, then the sectors I named excluding in-classroom schools would be able to open up after they've had training of their staffs and gone through their risk assessments and their policies and protocols. And then we also have to attest that we have triggers that we'll be looking for to see if we have to adjust these modifications, slow things down, tighten up restrictions. And so we have submitted those as well. There are in three main categories: epidemiology triggers, healthcare triggers, and healthcare, public health triggers, such as if we start to see a rapid increase over several consecutive days of cases being identified, if we start to see a doubling time of cases in less than five days, if we start to see these transmission linkages over a two-week period of time, et cetera, or if there's inability to do our contact investigation as quickly because cases are mounting, then those would be triggers for adjusting. So that will all be in our documentation that we'll be submitting to the state. So thank you. And back to you, Jill.
Thank you, Dr. Cutler. Again, Jill Blake, Public Health Director. If we can advance to the next slide. Let's see if I can. There we go. So the variance attestation steps. So they're laid out here on this slide for you, the steps that were laid out by the state. The first one being the phone consultation. We had our phone consultation today, Dr. Cutler and I, with three staff from the California Department of Public Health. They did an initial review of our documentation, and that went really well. Next is the certification through written attestation that the county meets the criteria. Again, Dr. Cutler, as our Health Officer, is the person who has to attest to that, and has, as he just indicated, he's prepared to attest to that today. The letters of support from the hospitals, we've received those. Our CEO's office helped facilitate that process, and we have the required letters. And lastly, we need to submit with our attestation documents a letter of support from you, our County Board of Supervisors, and we're here today to respectfully request this letter. I'll briefly mention that the COVID-19 containment plan that's referenced there is a recommended component for counties to consider, but it is not required. So while we intend to complete and submit a plan, we recognize that it would take some time to do so, and we didn't want to delay this attestation process. So we shared that with the California Department of Public Health today, and they said that that approach was just fine for us to go ahead and submit for attestation and submit our containment plan at a later date. So once we have your letter of support, if you grant that to us today, we will be submitting, as Dr. Cutler indicated, our attestation package to the California Department of Public Health. Once they receive it, we are hopeful that we'll have a 24- to 48-hour turnaround to have it reviewed, accepted, and posted to their website, at which time we can move forward with reopening Stage 2 businesses, except for schools, as Dr. Cutler indicated. And at this point, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ryan and Jill and Dr. Cutler. Thank you very much. Thank you for the incredible amount of hard work you put in to get us this far this fast. I'm going to go ahead and see if my colleagues have comments and questions. Why don't we start with Supervisor Anderson? Do you have any comments or questions at this point?
This is Supervisor Richard Anderson, District 5. No comments, no questions. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Schofield?
Just to say thank you to our staff. I know had to be an intense weekend for you, and it's greatly appreciated. No questions. Thank you, Chair Hall.
Thank you. Supervisor Hook?
Thank you. Supervisor Hook, District 4. Again, it's amazing how fast you guys have worked to get this done, and I know you know how important it is to our community, but can you just do some clarification for me? One, last week, we talked about curbside purchasing. Can you clarify that? Is that happening now? Is that in the later part of Stage 2? Can you clarify that to our business owners?
Sure. Hi, Ken Cutler, Public Health Officer. So if you recall, we were in Stage 1 of the Governor's plan, and then the state said we would move statewide to the soft opening of Stage 2, which really was curbside retail. So that could start without the variance that we are attesting to and applying for now. So again, businesses to have curbsides should already have had some measures in place for their employees, how they're going to handle purchases, how they're going to work with customers to decrease the chance for transmission, and continue physical distancing as much as possible. But yes, that could start prior to the variance that we're applying for.
Thanks, Dr. Cutler. And are those specifications listed on the website for people to be able to actually look up and see what you're wanting for them to do for safety precautions?
The state, for the various sectors within Stage 2, has guidances already listed for many of the businesses that people can look to on the resilience roadmap. Absolutely.
So that would be on the state's website, correct? Could you give that website out so that our listeners could hear that?
Jill, do you have that?
It is the, I think if someone were to, sorry, this is Jill Blake, Public Health Director. If somebody was to search for the resilience roadmap in California, I think they would find it. I don't have the email address right in front of me, but as we post our documents, our own reopen plan, and our attestation documents to our website, the link to that site is placed throughout that document, so maybe we can get that up today.
And I wanted to clarify that we're anticipating for the dining-in restaurants, that the state has said that they're likely to post that guidance beginning tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate all the hard work going on to this.
Okay. Thank you. And Supervisor Miller, questions or comments?
Yeah, Supervisor Miller, District 3. So my understanding is that tomorrow, county staff is going to be visiting businesses, explaining how the reopening is going to occur, and then pretty much everyone can, looks like they can open up on Wednesday into the second phase of Stage 2. Is that correct?
So this is Jill Blake again, Public Health Director. We do have to wait for the state to put their stamp of approval on our document, and again, we're expecting a 24- to 48-hour turnaround. So our plan is to submit those attestation documents today, and as soon as we get that approval, we will make sure that you and the community knows right away.
Is that a change, Jill, from what we had originally heard?
It is a slight change from what we originally heard. Originally, we understood that it would just require the attestation of our Health Officer and then letters of support from you and the hospitals, but there was an additional component that was added, not really meant to be an obstacle, but meant to just assure that for themselves, the California Department of Public Health, that as they're posting those plans on their website, that they do indeed meet the criteria that they set.
Any additional questions or comments, Supervisor Miller?
No, it's just a little frustrating. That's all it is.
Heidi, Supervisor Anderson, if you can hear me?
Yes, Supervisor Anderson, go ahead.
If I may. The survey report indicates that the guidance for multiple sectors can be found at covid19.ca.gov/roadmap/. So I think that should take care of Sue's question.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. There's also mynevadacounty.com/coronavirus for updates, and I know that I did see, I believe, in one of our press releases, a link to guidelines, checklists for our businesses that actually they can use to go through specifically and see what they need to do. Is that applicable, Dr. Cutler or Jill, to the Phase 2, this part of Phase 2 that we're looking at right now?
Yes, this is Jill, you're Jill Blake, Public Health Director. Yes, I believe that that is applicable to Stage 2.
Okay, great. Okay. Any other questions?
Supervisor Hook, District 4. I just have one other question. So this is great, and I know I don't want to sound like I want to move forward quicker, but after you get this attestation done, and we make it through 2, so what is the long-term range for 3? You know, and that is some of our little business, that's our business, like our hairdressers, our tattoo artists, have you, those type of businesses. So what's the long-range lookout for those folks?
So hi, it's Ken Cutler, Public Health Officer. So Stage 3, we don't have a timeline for, a date for. Certainly, we want to, whenever you have a relaxation or loosening, you want to see what's going to happen in terms of potential transmission in the community, not just our community, but those surrounding us, because they can affect our healthcare infrastructure as well. And if you, it can take some time for transmission to lead to disease, to hospitalizations, and unfortunately, even death. So that's why they've talked about gradual incremental change, because once you start to recognize a surge, even if you clamp down then and have tighter restrictions, it's going to take several more weeks to see the effect, and people would already have been exposed. So we don't want to move too quickly. I wish I could give you a timeline for Stage 3. The state has said they will continue to review it, and they'll look at parts of Stage 3 as well, such as some of the personal services, the salons, the barber shops, et cetera, to see if those can be any faster than other parts. But the variance that we are applying for is for the Stage 2 only. It does not allow us to accelerate into Stage 3. That's really done at the state level at this point. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Cutler. Okay, Supervisor Schofield, you have another question?
Yes, I think it's interesting that, as Sue, or Supervisor Hook noted, that some of those smaller businesses, barber shops, et cetera, are not acceptable on this, and yet in the Phase 2, schools were put into that category. That's quite interesting to me. So maybe just a little clarification as to perhaps why they were put into this phase and why we did not apply for that.
So certainly, so again, these were the stages and the sectors were determined at the state level, and what they looked at were the various sectors in terms of intensity of exposures, the frequency of exposures, and the modifications you could make. So it was felt, I can tell you at the state level, that classroom, you may be able to modify and keep physical distancing of students six feet apart, et cetera, whereas in some of the personal services, they're just by their very nature, very close together, where you may not be able to have masking and not have that six feet of distance as protection. We had talked to the superintendents of schools. Schools have been acting, doing remote classes, and they'll continue that to the end of the school year. And so it didn't make sense at this point, with just a few weeks left of school, to be coming back in and having those potential transmissions. So I think there needs to be a little more time for planning. Schools will have a number of interactions, and so we really want to be very, very careful before we have the in-classroom-based instruction, because we know from other viruses, like flu virus in the winters, that schools are, can be areas where transmission can happen pretty quickly. And even though we believe that kids are at much less risk for serious consequences, you've been reading that, unfortunately, sometimes it does happen, but they're much less at risk. They will be coming home, and they may have few symptoms or no symptoms at all, and be able to transmit that to somebody who could end up in the hospital or worse. And so I think we're going to have to be very thoughtful about bringing people back into the classroom, and with just a couple of weeks remaining in the school season, it didn't seem like it was the right time.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, I'm going to go in a few minutes here to public comment, and then we'll come back to my colleagues for any additional questions. But before I hand it over to our clerk to read a couple of the letters we received, I just want to make sure people know that we have received a number of letters, about 60, on a variety of issues, with a variety of opinions on this particular issue. I want to make sure that you know that many of you wrote regarding a quicker reopening of our businesses, and I want to let you know that we are listening. We're working with the state to reopen as safely and quickly as possible. We know our local businesses are suffering great losses and facing challenges that they couldn't have anticipated. We know you're all friends, family, and neighbors, and we're here to help everyone figure this out, regardless of what stage the business is in. So as we continue to receive these emails, letters, and comments on the issue, I want the public to be rest assured that all of the emails, letters, correspondence, phone calls that have been received have been distributed to all of the board members. They've been uploaded into our agenda management system, and they are part of the record, which is public. Today, we can celebrate a win. This morning, we had a great call with the state regarding preparedness to move further into reopening, and the county is working hard to make sure we can attest to our readiness and reopen local businesses safely. Now they can begin their work to develop their own plans and take responsibility for protecting their customers and staff. We have great trust in our businesses and the community that appropriate safeguards will be taken, and in fact, our success at keeping our businesses open through all of Phase 2 depends upon that. The county will be here to help provide information along the way, starting with direct outreach to businesses, and that's starting already tomorrow, to help answer questions and provide guidance on creating a COVID-19 prevention plan to protect their employees and customers, and thus all of the rest of us here in Nevada County. to protect their employees and customers and thus all of the rest of us here in Nevada County. So your letters are received, you're being heard, and I'm going to ask the clerk of the board to, just to read a sampling of them. We can't read them all. It's more time than we have for public comment. But Julie, are you there?
Yes, thank you Chair Hall. I was going to read two letters into the record. They're reflective of the emails and letters that we have received at this point. And currently, we are up to 80 pieces of correspondence and it does continue to increase. So here we go. As a resident of Nevada County, I care deeply about my community. While the COVID-19 pandemic started as a frightening event based upon what we were seeing happening in Europe and in New York, the bigger pandemic today is a loss of our freedom and our community's economic viability. I am heartened that the data in Nevada County is indicating that out of a population of over 97,000, we have identified just over 40 documented cases of the virus. This is a clear indication that our community has been successful in following the state and Nevada County guidelines responsibly, and those afflicted with this infection have recovered. Our curve has flattened with no new cases reported. In the meantime, our hospitals and medical facilities are underutilized and very likely hemorrhaging financially. Our local shops, restaurants and nonprofits are suffering, some closing permanently as a result of the shutdown. We are compelled to remain sequestered, unable to visit family, attend church services, or in some cases even obtain elective medical or dental services, which is greatly affecting the physical quality of life and health for many people. We are watching our friends and neighbors go down to the hill to neighboring counties to purchase goods and services, knowing that those tax dollars could be spent here in Nevada County, helping the county recover economically. We are responsible and resourceful people who care about our own health and that of those around us. We can assume some normal activities, excuse me, we can resume some normal activities while taking every precaution to assure the safety of those with whom we come in contact with. If our elected officials continue to delay the reopening of the county, small businesses and many nonprofits will perish. I ask Nevada County Board of Supervisors to stand with the citizens of this county and to support our rights as citizens to live freely, to operate our businesses and to serve our community. And this is from Terry McLaughlin. She's a District 1 resident. And from Kim Sarris, she's a District 2 resident, she says, Dear Board Members, I have been hearing more and more about individual and business owners encouraging people in Nevada County to defy the current process for reopening our local businesses and making modifications like requiring face coverings and not social distancing as we are encouraged and mandated to do so in order to protect our local residents from the spread of COVID-19. Hearing people saying to take back our town or not wear masks if you don't want to scares me because of their defiance of the orders and their selfish disregard for the rest of us who have people in their lives who are at high risk of dying if they were to be infected with this virus. I feel that reopening decisions should be based on science and facts, not politics and protesters. We have been given a roadmap, so let's follow it to keep us safe. And that, that's reflective of the correspondence you've received, Board Members.
Okay, thank you Julie. So I think, just to reiterate, we've received many, many more comments, but they tend to fall along those lines. And this point, I'm going to close the public comment and come back to the board for any additional last questions or comments. And Sue, I think you had one more. Sue Horn Supervisor, Supervisor Hook, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Hook, District 4. Thank you. This was for Dr. Cutler. And I know this is, I just am getting a lot of pressure from my constituents too. So I am just curious, how do you, what's the difference between dental hygiene, which they're coming back to online as a second priority and number two versus salons?
Well, there's a difference in that dentists have been trained, healthcare providers, they have, they have been trained in personal protective equipment. And if you don't do dental maintenance, it becomes urgent dental problems that can have significant health problems, which is very different than if you don't go to the salon or a barber shop for a while. That, just in terms of the effect on overall health. We know dental health can cause pneumonias, abscesses, a lot of pain and discomfort with cavities. And so is really dental health is a part of our overall health. And again, it's in the hands of, of people who have been taught how to have infection control practices as part of their profession. So I, I know that a lot of hairstylists and barbers are very meticulous about their infection control as well and things. But in terms of the impact on overall health, I'd say the dental, the dental care is, is paramount. And so I'm glad to see that actually starting back up. Thanks.
No, great. I appreciate that. I would say the salon though has to do with mental health. And I'm just smiling for that for a second. I mean, this is-
No, yeah, and I smile with you. I think they're actually very important. And it's why socially, we have to find ways to come together and support each other. That barber shops and salons have been a big part of our society and ways where people come together and it is good for their mental health. Connect, social connections are, are huge for us. And so hopefully, we'll continue to find ways to foster that without sacrificing some of those physical distancing, without seeing increased transmission in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Cutler.
Chair Hall.
Okay, thank you. Yes Supervisor Schofield, was that?
Yes, maybe along the same line. And I suspect this is for Molly. That as we look at these other areas that we hope to see opening soon, for instance, religious services, is our, moving forward, that the committee and the plan we had for reopening, are they still addressing that or have they completed their work with what's being committed, turned into the state?
Yes, good afternoon Supervisors. This is Molly Dick, Assistant County Executive Officer. And I have been chairing our COVID Recovery Advisory Committee. That committee has been meeting several times a week. First, to help to prepare guidance for those Stage 2 businesses that we knew would be the next to be coming online. On the website that we referenced earlier, on the Nevada County website, we do have two template business plans, one that is geared towards retailers and a second that is geared towards restaurants. So that's the first step of these businesses that need to have a plan in order to safely reopen. In addition to that, our Environmental Health Director and Environmental Health Staff have done outreach to all of the restaurant community and will be starting to visit those, those businesses tomorrow. They're also hosting a webinar later today specifically for the restaurant community to provide information and answer their questions. So as soon as we feel like we have provided ample resources to our Stage 2 businesses, we will be turning our focus to Stage 3. And we've received several requests for information in Stage 3 businesses that are interested in next steps. So definitely heard from the lodging community, they're part of Stage 3. The state does have some resources for lodging available on their website. And then also churches and other community-type facilities, including our libraries, are part of Stage 3. So that will be our next area to focus on, once we have provided enough resources to get our Stage 2 businesses up and going.
Thank you Molly.
Thank you Chair Hall.
Okay, great. And Richard Anderson, you have another question?
Thank you Chair Hall. This is Richard Anderson, District 5. We are to submit our final plan and letters of support to the state today. What time do they, what time do they need to arrive by?
This is Jill Blake, your Public Health Director. We are submitting them electronically and our intent is to get them to the state before close of business. And close of business for them technically is 5 o'clock, although I'm sure that some, some folks will be there a bit later than that.
Thank you. And, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution and after that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt it.
I just have one final question for Dr. Cutler.
Okay Supervisor Miller?
Dr. Cutler, this is Dan Miller, District 3. One of the comments that we received was the possibility that there were hotels and motels open in Sacramento, Placer, Yuba and Center County. Could you tell me, is that a fact or is that fiction? Because one of our hotel providers here was curious.
I, Supervisor, I don't know the status of hotels in other jurisdictions. I can tell you that throughout this stage, non-essential travel is discouraged. It's really the mixing of populations that is going to drive transmission and slow all of this down. And so I would strongly discourage tourism. We're not ready for that yet. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cutler. All right. Okay, I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution approving a letter of support for Nevada County's novel coronavirus reopening readiness plan and authorizing the Chair of the Board to sign the letter as a necessary step to save Phase reopening. Whereas on March 4th, 2020, the Governor of the State of California proclaimed a state of emergency in response to the unprecedented novel coronavirus pandemic. And whereas on March 19th, 2020, the State Health Officer issued a shelter-in-place order, which ordered Californians to shelter in their place of residence except for essential business. And whereas on April 28th, 2020, the Governor announced a roadmap to reopening that envisioned four phases, the first being the full shelter-in-place order, followed by the opening of low-risk businesses with modifications, the opening of high-risk businesses with modifications, and finally, the full release of the shelter-in-place order. And whereas on May 7th, 2020, the state amended the shelter-in-place order to commence Phase 2 of the reopening roadmap on May 8th, 2020, allowing certain low-risk business activities to commence with modifications, including things like curbside retail. The modification also established a process for counties with low prevalence and adequate containment measures to accelerate through Stage 2 of the reopening. And whereas in Nevada County, cases increased rapidly in late March 2020 and subsequently, due to the sacrifice and diligence of the community, the hard work of medical professionals, local jurisdictions and of county staff, the increase in cases has slowed and the epidemiological curve has flattened. And whereas Nevada County meets all the readiness criteria established by the state and stands ready to accelerate through Phase 2 reopening, not because novel coronavirus is no longer a threat, but rather because prevalence in the community, containment measures and the diligence of the community allow that reopening to occur safely. And whereas Public Health Officer Dr. Ken Cutler has prepared a reopening readiness plan and attestation, has reviewed them with the State Health Officer and has received concurrence from the medical community. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Nevada, State of California, that the Chair of the Board of Supervisors be and hereby is authorized to sign the letter of approval and substantially the form attached here too. All right, can I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Sue Hook, District 4 Supervisor, so moved.
I have a second.
District 2 Supervisor Schofield, I second that motion.
All right, great move by Sue Hook, seconded by Scofield. Julie, can we have a vote?
Yes, thank you Chair Hall. District 5.
Richard Anderson, District 5, yes.
District 2.
Supervisor Schofield, District 2, yes.
District 4.
Supervisor Sue Hook, District 4, yes.
District 3.
Supervisor Miller, District 3, yes.
And District 1.
Supervisor Heidi Hall, District 1, yes. The motion is, thank you. The motion is approved. I'll sign the letter as soon as we are adjourned. And thank you everyone for coming into this meeting and for listening in. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.